February 11, 2025, regular meeting of Santa Barbara City Council. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Harmon absent. Councilmember Santa Maria here. Councilmember Sneddon here. Mayor Pro Tem Friedman here. Councilmember Gutierrez present. Councilmember Jordan here. Mayor Rouse here.
Very good, thank you. And Madam Administrator, any changes to the agenda?
Not that I'm aware of, Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, we will go on to the consent calendar. You have some items to read.
Item six, TEFFRA Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, Hearing for Colorado Health Facilities Authority Revenue Bonds Issuance Resolution, Recommendation that Council Adopt by Reading of Title Only, A Resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara Approving the Issuance of Revenue Bonds to be issued by the Colorado Health Facilities Authority in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $180 million, a portion of which in a principal amount not to exceed $5 million, will be used to finance the construction, renovation, remodeling, and/or equipping of certain facilities owned and/or operated by Covenant Living Communities and Services, FKA Covenant Retirement Communities, Inc., and/or one of its affiliates, Covenant's Living West, DBA Covenant Living at the Samarcand, located in the city of Santa Barbara, California, and certain other matters relating there, too.
Thank you. Does anyone from council need to pull an item for...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. On item six, could you please open the public hearing and then close it if there's no one here to speak or online?
Okay, very good. So will you open the public hearing on item six? Are there any public speakers on item six? Any online as well?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that, very good. And Madam Attorney, do we need to take a separate vote on item six?
No, you do not.
Okay, we can do that. With that, are there any other consent items to be pulled on the agenda? All right, very good. With that, I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
So moved by Eric Freeman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gutierrez. Let's have the vote, please.
So, motion made by Councilmember Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Gutierrez, to approve entirety of the consent calendar. Go ahead and vote.
Thank you, it passes unanimously with all members here absent, Meghan Harmon. And with that, we'll close the consent calendar and move to report from the Finance Committee. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, at the Finance Committee, we heard an item regarding the rate setting for Santa Barbara Clean Energy on the 100% green as it relates to Edison has changed their rates. So we heard that, how that impacts it, and made some recommendations to forward on to council that would leave what customers are paying the same, but addresses the issues that come from Edison and its changes in rates. And that will be coming to council February 25, I believe.
All right, very good, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to general public comment. And public comment is for any item that is not on today's agenda, but still within the purview of this body. And just because I can see that it's a lot of Eucalyptus Hill folks here, and I'm sure I know what the subject is, just a small announcement. I've already talked to Sue Burke about this. Our city administrator, Kelly McAdoo, is willing to meet with you folks and talk about this in detail. So please consider that when you're making your comments. We're very aware of what the issue is and hope we can find a way to resolve everyone's concerns. And with that, I'll start with Sue Burke.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm Sue Burke, the president of Eucalyptus Hill Improvement Association, and I'm here with members of our board and concerned neighbors from our neighborhood to formally present a petition for the installation of speed humps on Alston Road to address the persistent speeding issue in our neighborhood. We have gathered over 130 signatures from our distressed neighbors. For over two decades, our organization has been actively seeking a solution to this problem, and we have been unable to implement effective measures to control speeding on Alston. And I have included in your paperwork a timeline of what we have done over that period of time. We understand that similar traffic speed humps have been successfully implemented in other areas of our city, such as Milpas Street, Noble Street, Aliso's, and Alamar Avenue near Oak Park, just to name a few. While we acknowledge concerns about Alston Road being an emergency escape route, recent events like the Palisades Fire have demonstrated that during emergencies, traffic congestion can render those routes ineffective, and the speed humps would not be an issue. Mr. Mayor, I have spoken to you about this issue, and you directed me to the Santa Barbara Fire Department as they gave a special exemption for the Milpas Speed Humps to be installed. After talking with the Fire Department, they directed me to talk with Derek Bailey from Santa Barbara Public Works, and our organization has discussed the situation with Derek on many occasions to no avail. He then directed me to talk with the Police Department to try to get more police presence on Alston Road. I then talked with our police chief, Kelly Gordon, and she told me they only have one motorcycle comp for the whole city of Santa Barbara, and that there was no funding to get another motorcycle officer. And then she suggested I talk with City Council. So now I've come full circle, and it seems as though we're being pushed from one agency to the next, and we still haven't had anything done. Eucalyptus Hill Improvement Association offered to purchase and install radar signs on Alston Road and pay for the maintenance of them, but Derek Bailey told us that because they would be placed on city property, the city would have to maintain them, and they don't have the funds for that. Again, we offered to pay for all of this. So just weeks ago, a neighbor's dog was hit and killed on Alston Road, and another neighbor's car was totaled as she backed out of her driveway. Your leadership in resolving this matter is crucial to prevent potential accidents or fatalities resulting from excessive speed. We urge the City Council to prioritize the safety of our residents and take immediate action to address this longstanding issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Schleck?
Thank you. I came here with three points, but Sue just took the second point, which was the radar thing that we would pay for everything, and we didn't get anywhere. I live on Alston Road, and we really kind of call it Alston Speedway. I live on the west edge of it, of the Speedway, near Sima Linda Road. And service people that come to my house know not to back into the street because of the speed coming from the east. But most importantly, when they pull out of my driveway, I say, it's safe to go west. Because if you go east, you pull out, and there's a curve. And just before that curve, people are anticipating the Speedway coming up, and they put the hammer down. And if you don't, the last thing you ought to look at is who's coming around that corner? Because otherwise, you can pull into them, or when you do pull into, you have a nice guy in your rearview mirror. And so it's really not a safe situation at all. Again, I want to echo her comment about the radar signs. I thought that was a smart thing to do. We'd pay for it, pay for the maintenance. I mean, that's just kind of a no-brainer, it seemed to me. Then the final thing. A lot of people walk, their dogs walk, on the south side of that road. It's wide, and there's a lot of folks during the high-traffic times. And I think you, the city, has a real liability, because we've come here so many times now. If there's a real accident, if somebody gets hurt, you're going to get sued. And I think this should go to your Risk Management Department. You ought to include them to support getting something done on that road.
Thank you. Bobby Shan?
Hi, thank you. I think you can get a sense of the frustration that the community has, the number of people that have signed, the people that have shown up here, the conversations that have been going on for years. I live, my wife and I live at 612 Alston. I walk my dog every night on Alston. I've, it's always like a life-and-death situation, really. What happens in that beautiful, the beautiful transition between Montecito and Santa Barbara, and if people are late and they're trying to get home or going in either direction, there's that straightaway. And they're driving a fast car, they can't help but take the urge of putting pedal to the metal. So we've, it's been life-threatening. So we're here and asking that you really put your own efforts to make this a solution that's fixable for all of us. Thanks.
Thank you. Lynn Krieger?
Before I begin, Mayor Rouse and council, I just have to say this is ironic, because I'm not here about Alston Road, but I sat on the Eucalyptus Hill Board some years ago, and this was an issue then, and it's an issue now. So I'm sorry to interrupt their flow, but I have a different topic. So, good afternoon, and I have to thank you for everything you do for Santa Barbara. I know your list is very long all the time. I'm a longtime resident, but I spent many years of my career working on redevelopment projects, leasing of public land for development, that was my major thing, and tourism boards in California. And I'm here because many of us want whatever you do with State Street to be a huge success. I mean, we love this community, and we'd like it to stay. So I have three short points. One is, the rethinking of State Street's a tremendous challenge. A lot of cities have tried to do pedestrian downtowns, and very few have succeeded, very few. I don't know if you've talked to any of those successes, but that would be great. This is Santa Barbara's heart, and the process is risky. So if you haven't, I urge you, because it changed my life about halfway through my career, I urge you to retain a specialized real estate economist to look at what it would take to attract the kind of people you want. Because not everybody there now is what you're going to want on your permanent State Street. There are some who are really excellent, and it really was a game changer. Second, this is a big change to the historic area, and people, of course, love it here because of how it looks and feels. The ocean, of course, is a big attraction. But the big thing is not to be like anybody else. What makes Santa Barbara wonderful is that it's so unique. Its architecture is unique, its feeling is unique, its style is unique. And I don't think you want to be the same. There are a lot of vacancies. I don't know many locals, except students, who go to downtown right now, except for an occasional restaurant. One large retailer told me they see very few local buyers anymore, so they have an order-online program. Two others closed, telling me that their customer base just didn't come downtown anymore, just to see them. So the last thing, I'll be really quick. Financial feasibility, back to the economist. I've seen a lot of drawings that just didn't go anywhere, starting with San Diego in the 1980s. It was the third round that finally succeeded, and that's a very expensive way to go. So I just am concerned about that. And tourism is great. I've sat on a number of tourism boards, or advised tourism boards, but there are costs to that, and it generates low-income jobs. So then we get back to housing, and we're back in this circle again. So just thinking about these things, you have some terrific designers. I know who they are. I wish you the best, and I'm happy to do anything I can to help.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mary Kruger?
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to thank you all for your public service on our behalf. I'm a resident of Rametto Road, which is on one end of Alston. And Alston, as you may or may not know, it's very windy. And so when I come out from my street wanting to turn either way, I have limited sight distance. So I'll, it looks good, I'm proceeding slowly, and then I see somebody speeding towards me, and I have to blast on out of there. So I want to reiterate, I think it's a dangerous situation that needs some remediation. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Richardson?
Good afternoon. Like Mary, we, my wife and I, live on Rametto, and I'm actually a newbie, so we've only been there a year, not two decades, trying to resolve this. But we walk, we're very active, we've got a dog. We're out in that stretch at least once a day. And it's just sketchy, I think, as everybody's discussed here today. And the only thing I would add to the discussion is that the petition ought to consider extending to Summit beyond Rametto. That area is particularly devious. It has a blind curve with no shoulder on either side. And I've seen a lot of near misses in the little bit of time that we've been there. So I look forward to seeing some action on this issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Lori Beardsmore?
Sue wanted me to remind you she put a map, I guess, in your materials. So, Mayor and council, as a former president and current board member of the Eucalyptus Hill Improvement Association, one of the primary concerns of our neighborhood is public safety. And as president back then, and Sue reiterates now, people are very, very concerned over speeding issues. I contacted the county, and they've also formally identified Alston as one of those roads worthy of addressing speeding concerns. We've reached out to the PD for increased patrol, but those are sporadic due to staffing. In early 2022, I reached out to the county, and they were more than willing to partner with us to install a digital speed sign, like you see on Hermosillo and Cliff Drive, or Shoreline Drive, if we purchased the sign. After realizing Eucalyptus Hill was in the county, they said they couldn't help us. I reached out to Derek Bailey, and he said the city doesn't have the staffing to maintain additional speed signs, even if Eucalyptus Hill paid for a sign, even though the county and the sign suppliers say its own maintenance is only needed about every five years. Derek said the city is severely under staff. We offered to pay for our own contractor for maintenance, and we were still turned down. We were told that it was also not equitable to less fortunate neighborhoods. Possible injuries and death are not based on equity. In 2022, you had a 30% vacancy rate for project engineers. And today, with Cliff Mauer's resignation, I'm hearing the same staffing issues. Things are not getting better. It seems they're only getting worse. I appealed to Kelly McAdoo to look at this again last June, and she said she would keep me posted when she heard back from Public Works. I reached out again in August, November, and again this month, and still no reply. You have a neighborhood that has the will and the means to take on a public safety issue that the city literally cannot address. It seems that you should be able to enter into a public-private partnership with our neighborhood. And if you can't, perhaps you can sign an MOU with the county to allow some traffic calming device, whether it's a speed hump or a digital speed sign. And I have the memo of understanding that the Hermosillo neighborhood signed with the county. It's one page, it's simple, and I'll give you, you can all have a copy of that. It's very simple. So I'm hoping that something can be done to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Ireland?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I've lived on Alston Road for 25 years, and I walk that road every single day. And the traffic has only gotten worse, more traffic and faster traffic. And sometimes when I'm walking, I usually walk early before too much traffic. But sometimes when I'm walking, the cars go so fast, it takes my breath away. Sometimes I have to stand back and hang on to something. Sometimes the sun's in their eyes, early in the morning when they're going to the east, and then going the other way, going to the west, it's in their eyes. Or sometimes they're just distracted, looking at their phones or whatever. And it's really dangerous. We really need some system. And I would love the digital readout myself. I think that works, especially on Hermosillo. But I would love something like that on Alston, or speed bumps, or something, just to slow the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Del Bello?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here. I'm a native Santa Barbara, and I've lived on Alston Road for 32 years. And I want you to look at me, because I am a victim of two accidents in front of our yard in those 30 years. One of them missed an electrical pole by inches. If he would have hit that pole, it would have landed on my house. And I might not be here today to talk to you. I've, last year, I called the Police Department, and they did send the one motorcycle gentleman, and twice he came. And I believe, if you check, have the records, he found five or six speeding tickets that were issued during that time. But he only could stay for an hour or two, because he had to go to other areas, because there's only one police officer on the motorcycle. What we need to do, I feel that we're the forgotten part of Santa Barbara up there. I hardly see the sweet cleaners, and I hardly see the Police Department. So I ask you to please, please, I don't want a third accident happening in front of our property. To take some kind of action so that, you know, I'm 86 years old, and I hope that before I die, some action is taken. God bless you all.
Thank you. And once again, we've come to the end of the stack of the, you know, Eucalyptus Hill folks. But get to point, and once again, Kelly McAdoo is invited to meet with you offline.
Okay, when, right now?
We're getting a little jumpier with her, Anthony. Not quite yet, but we're ready for you. And I'll help facilitate that as well, if I...
All right, I'll watch full-time.
All right. Okay, very good. Stanley Zankoff?
Hello, Mayor, council, and members of the community that are here. My name is Stanley Zankoff. I'm here wearing my Santa Barbara Tenants Union hat on. And I'm here to read the statement that tenants at 215 Bath Street read to members of the press last Sunday, February 2, as they declared that they're going on a rent strike. You may have seen this on the news. Hopefully, you've been seeing this, and I know we've been here before you many times as well. And so I'll go ahead and uplift their voices, since, you know, they've been embattled in this fight for over a year and a half now. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time out of your day to be here on Sunday afternoon. We've invited you here because, as of yesterday, this is February 1, the original and remaining 14 tenants here at 215 Bath Street are calling for the property owners and the city of Santa Barbara to stop the harassment we've endured for over a year and make repairs, not evictions. Since September 2023, the new property owners at 215 Bath LLC, James P. Knapp, Austin Hurley, and Chris Parker, have continuously attempted to displace our community and made us endure harassment for over a year, some of which was particularly bad over the holidays. And so we, the tenants, are taking a stand by participating in a rent strike. Until conditions are improved at 215 Bath and/or until the city takes real action against our landlords, we will no longer attempt to pay rent. What we are asking for is simple. We want repairs, not evictions. We have offered to give the landlords access and let them start repairs, but they have decided to evict us instead. We just want to be safe. We have offered to let the owners begin work and make repairs, but they are waiting to make repairs so they can make more money. They won't tell us anything about the construction plans, because they are waiting for us to leave. Please, drop the unlawful detainers and do the necessary work now while workers and tenants live here. The remaining tenants at 215 Bath Street and our tenant association remain united in this. We're taking a stand, not just for ourselves, but because we know this could save our neighbors across the city and down the street from similar treatment. We are the diverse working class of Santa Barbara and take this action united and committed to ourselves and the city. We are hotel workers, landscapers, bankers, marketers, nurses, entrepreneurs, senior citizens, cooks, and mechanics. More than anything, though, we are longtime neighbors and community members here deserving of safe homes. Some of the demands they mentioned are dismiss all unlawful detainer complaints filed against them, performing electrical work required to bring the property up to code, and more. And what I think I want to stress is that the city, I know, is taking legal action against the property managers, and that's wonderful. But there is a policy prescription that you can also do to cap rent increases after evictions. Thanks.
Brett Valant? Okay. And are there any speakers online for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. And then, public comment, we will move on to council member committee assignment reports. Anyone got one? Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Neighborhood Advisory Council met last night. Unfortunately, I mislabeled it on my calendar, so I did not attend. But this is the first meeting that's been held in, like, over a year. So it's pretty exciting that that's still active, and I'll... That, that's still active, and I'll give you an update as soon as I get one. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nudden.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. For official committees, the Sustainability Committee met and already forwarded some of that to Finance Committee, which Councilmember, Finance Chair Friedman reported out on.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman.
I attended the Sustainability Committee.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I was able to attend yesterday's Neighborhood Advisory Council, can definitely echo Councilmember Gutierrez's, you know, excitement that this is very much ongoing, and now that it's under the city administrator's office, it's, you know, it seems to be, have a lot of good energy there, so. We'll report back when we have the next meeting. We'll be on the East Side next month, March 20th, so, yeah, looking forward to seeing somebody there.
All right, very good. And with that, we'll move on to Item 7.
Item 7, public hearing for the disestablishment of the Downtown and Old Town Business Improvement District's assessments. Ordinance introduction, recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara repealing Chapters 4.39 and 4.43 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code and disestablishing the Downtown Parking and Business Improvement Area and the Old Town Parking and Business Improvement Area.
Very good. And with that, we'll open the public hearing and go to Mr. Bodett for the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. Brandon Bodett, Acting Labor Director, by hearing my role in the city administrator's office today. The item before you is the disestablishment of the Downtown and Old Town Business Improvement District. These districts have actually been in place for quite some time, a couple decades now, and they're administered under the provisions of the Parking and Business Improvement Law of 1989. Merchants paying to the assessment to pay for marketing and promotional services, and Downtown Santa Barbara is acting as the third-party administrator for these services currently. The district, there's two separate districts, two different assessment methodologies for both. The, the larger downtown district runs from Mitchell Turner to Artega, and the smaller Old Town District runs from Old Town down to Gutierrez. Traditionally, the services provided have been very marketing promotional material oriented. Services in the past have included First Thursday's Art Walk, holiday decor, promotions for downtown through, either through websites, social media, marketing campaigns, et cetera. Last June in 2024, a downtown community business improvement district was formed. This operates similar to the business improvement districts currently, but this is a property assessment district. Now, this district is larger in both the size and the assessment methodology, so it's a much bigger budget. This district overlaps with the two current districts as well as services. So services being provided will also be provided by the new downtown community bid. Therefore, as spelled out under the management district plan to form this bid, disestablishment of the current business improvement districts is warranted at this time. So some actions taken to get us to the public hearing today. Last month, council adopted resolution of intent to disestablish. Letters were mailed to all affected businesses in both the downtown and old town districts, as well as publishing the public hearing today. So the action taken today is actually twofold. One is to actually disestablish the two districts, but also repeal pertinent municipal code sections, so taking them out of the, of the, any mention of them out of the municipal code. So that brings us to the recommendation before you, to repeal Sections 4.39 and 4.43 of the municipal code and disestablish the downtown and old town business improvement districts. I'll turn it back to council with any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from council? Ms. Nudden.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I apologize I haven't asked this sooner, but how does this impact, or how has impacted the downtown parking committee or the, because I see the, yeah, so that, and also the disestablishing of the downtown parking and business improvement area, is there a relationship or not?
No, the parking committee is separate. This is just the assessment on businesses for the business improvement area and the funding of the, the downtown organization. Parking is, we still have a separate parking improvement district, is my understanding.
Yeah, that, that's correct. The PBI still is in place. It's just kind of confusing because they're formed under the similar parking business improvement law. And so that's why it's mentioned as such in the municipal code.
Thank you. And that's what I had thought until reading the recommendation, that it's the downtown parking and business improvement area. So why is it called that?
It's, it's just how it was written and when the municipal code, when we first formed several decades ago. But the, the sections pertaining to the PBI specific downtown are still remaining in the municipal code.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Further questions of staff? If not, we'll go to public speech. I have Downtown Organization, Robin Elander, Director.
Today, I want to start by honoring all of the contributions the longstanding Business Improvement District has made to our downtown community over the last more than 50 years. Today marks, while today marks the dissolution of the existing Business Improvement District, it also marks the beginning of a new phase of development for our downtown business community. This, the dissolution marks the opportunity to replace it with a new and improved business model, the Community Benefit Improvement District, which will replace it with a modern, better-funded organization to serve the next phase of our downtown development. Specifically, the new organization will come with new and improved services, specifically maintenance, security, and branding services. So a new website, a new and improved look and feel to the way the services are delivered. And the whole goal is to create a more welcoming place to do business and to visit for our residents and visitors. I also want to thank council for your ongoing partnership with these business improvement districts, as well as staff, and for your continued collaboration as we enter into this new phase. This morning, an adjacent activity took place with our business members. Over 90 business members met this morning to do the same activity, to dissolve, to elect to dissolve the existing downtown organization and to transition its assets into the new organization, shall this process today finalize and complete. So really, today is a special occasion. It's, it's also kind of bittersweet because there's a lot that has gone into this organization and the way that it's served downtown, and I'm proud to have been part of that. I'm proud to have worked with you all during that time, and I'm excited about the new phase. So that ends my comments, and thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public speakers online for this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Very good. Back to council. Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No problem with the action, but I just wanted, while Robin was in the building, to thank her personally for, I'm going to miss the number of years, but I just know the start of your involvement in your five years. But the start of your involvement in that role was, was a messy one, not because of you, just a messy one to, to get into. And you've done what I think is a great job, always with a smile, always with a lot of enthusiasm. And I know your future role is a little bit gray, gray area right now, but I wish you the best, and I hope you're back in a role with the, with the C-Bid, because I think you've really shown just a remarkable ability, no matter what's going on, to have a smile on your face and to have enthusiasm right there with you and try and infect everybody else with it. So just wanted to say just good luck, and thank you so much for the last five years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Nudden.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I'd like to echo that. I think particularly in the last five years, the, the sort of friendly rebranding and the reimagining of what could happen downtown and the sort of more festive environment and really collaborative approach that you've taken, Ms. Elander, and the board as well. I've really appreciated what you've done for the downtown. And because of that momentum, it was then possible to have hope that something like this could move forward and could, you know, inject even more into the downtown. So it's really directly correlated to, to your efforts and also just what you've, what you've been able to bring for the city, and I really appreciate that. And it is a little bittersweet. I mean, it's been a long time with the organization, and I just really love the thought that the momentum that has particularly been built in the last few years will be able to make it even better. So thank you.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too just want to praise Robin for all her hard work and your team. Whenever I think about downtown and, and Santa Barbara, you're one of the people that pop into my head because you've become so iconic with the, with that responsibility. And, yeah, I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
All right, very good. Well, I know this will surprise people, but I was actually there in the beginning of the formation of the downtown organization and what we did, and, and watched it grow from just a, just a handful of people around a very small table into this monster organization that did so much with so many volunteers, including the holiday parade and, of course, First Thursday, which is still one of the best things that we do, and a great promotional effort for the downtown. Got through the challenges of COVID, which was no small challenge, so that's, yeah, for any of us. So anyway, so yes, it is, it is bittersweet. Hopefully, we're on a positive trajectory, and congratulations on a good career. Thank you. Mr. Jordan.
I'll move the staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by Jordan?
Second.
Seconded by Friedman? Any discussion? Oh, let's have the, the tote board.
Motion made by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Councilmember Friedman to approve staff recommendations. Go ahead and vote.
Pass the unanimously without Megan Harmon. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll go to council staff communications and council member engagements. Who got engaged? That would be Eric Friedman.
That was a long time ago I got engaged. It was a week of opening nights. I went to the Film Festival opening night, terrific film, and just thank you to the Film Festival and all the volunteers and all the staff that made not only the opening night a success, but just this whole week in general, and just amazing, and just, it's always a great for our entire city to showcase our, our city. And then went to Ensemble Theater Company, opening night of Hamlet as well, and it was a packed house there, and it's very great to have that, that theater right there on Victoria Street by the public market. It just means a lot of energy to the area whenever they have that opening up, so I wanted to give a shout out to Ensemble Theater and all the, and all the actors in Hamlet.
Here, Ms. Nudden.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Also, as I think almost all of us did, attended the opening night of the Film Festival, and it was really so fun, especially with all of the youth interviews along the red carpet, and just a particular thank you to Roger Durling for making that festival what it is and making it truly international, really special. Let's see, Communify 211 had a community meeting. I attended the Indivisible Stop the Coup Town Hall. Really important information there for our community. Attended also the Ensemble Theater's opening night of Hamlet, and that was very enjoyable. And also attended the Fund for Santa Barbara Social Justice Awards on Sunday, and they awarded for the movie in the Film Festival, The Movie Separated, and also had a panel, also very informative about things that we can be doing in the community for our undocumented neighbors and friends.
Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the opening night of the Film Festival as well. Want to thank Roger Durling and his whole crew for being able to put that together. I attended the Puerto Vallarta Sister Cities Swearing In Ceremony at Caesar's on Milpa Street. I also attended the Fridays for the Future at the CEC Center. I attended the Harding School Element, Harding Elementary School Planting Day. That was a lot of fun. A lot of the parents and kids got together and they planted trees and such around the campus. And I also attended the Communify Third Annual 211 Community Day and the Town Hall at the Unitarian Church. Watched the Super Bowl for what it was, and, yeah, that's about it.
Okay. Ms. Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I also attended the opening night of the Santa Barbara Film Festival, and especially want to give a special shout out to Keep the Funk for their amazing film that I also went to go see last Thursday. I also participated in the Bella Vista Groundbreaking, which is the new Housing Authority Affordable Housing Project being built up near Lacumbre, and also have been meeting with some of our local business owners on the East Side and on the Milpas Corridor regarding some continuous concerns about unlawful street vending and, you know, safety hazards and, you know, fire code violations, so. And those same issues were also brought up at the Neighborhood Advisory Council meeting, which I attended yesterday. And then I was also, I also participated in the Unitarian Society's Town Hall on Saturday. That's it.
Very good. Double dip from Councilmember Friedman.
Thanks, Ms. Mayor. Sorry, I forgot one that was, that was incredibly fun. It was, I volunteered with the San Marcos High School Apple Academy for their Spring Day of Caring, and so there was about 60 high school students, and they volunteered at about five different sites. They, the sites I went to was Bucket Brigade, Botanic Garden, Boys and Girls Club of Galida, Hillside House, and Flower and Power, and there was about a dozen students at each one. It was all morning until the early afternoon, and just really amazing to see the feedback that they had and just participating with those organizations and, and just the circular loop there, building community through that. And then the guest speaker when they returned was our own, who was just here a minute ago, was our own Brandon Bodett. So it was fun to see Brandon tell his story about public service and, and what it means to him, and share that with a group of about 60 high school students. And the questions they asked were, they were tough questions. They didn't go easy on him, but he, he did well, and it was just really great to get to know one of our colleagues here in a new way and just his story as well. So thank you to all the students that volunteered, and thank you to Mr. Bodett for a day of community service.
All right, very good. Well, along with a few, I also attended the Santa Barbara Film Festival opening night, and it was amazing to see that many people stand out in the rain and absolutely pack the Arlington. So that, once again, Roger Durling is a, is a local hero in my book, they're bringing, pulling that off. It's a great thing. I attended the Bella Vista Groundbreaking as well, and oftentimes what we don't realize is how much work actually our city attorney's office has to put into those projects, so shout out to them for that. Another great project by the Housing Authority. And lastly, my monthly Partners in Education meeting emphasized how many kids are ready for internships. They're actually paid internships, but they're, they're made job-ready by Partners in Education. And we do quite a, we go to quite a few programs to try to encourage kids to jump into their careers early and, and get their academics rolling, so. And with that, we don't have any public comment for after this, and we are. Anybody else? We stand adjourned.